Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to Government Center. We're delighted that each and every one of you are here. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Macon-Bibb County Commission for August 21st, call it to order, and begin on our agenda tonight. As we typically do, we start our meetings with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. We are joined tonight by Pastor Dexter Jordan of the Center Hill Baptist Church. And Pastor Jordan, if you would come over to the podium, please, sir. And then we have a couple of 4-H students who will come up and stand behind you. And when you are through with your invocation, the 4-H students and our Boy Scout troop will come forward and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Pastor Jordan, we'll call on you. And ladies and gentlemen, would you please stand as you are able for the invocation and pledge of allegiance?
Eternal God, our Father, we thank you and we bless you for this day. We thank you now for this hour. And we even thank you tonight for this meeting. As we come together, we pray now that your Spirit will come into this place. God, we lift up this city of Macon and we pray now for her works and her continued works that you were blessed in a mighty way. God, we even pray now for our council members. We pray even for our mayor. And heaven Father, as we go forth tonight, we pray that you will guide and direct in all things. We know that all things will work together for the good of them that love you. And God, we even just thank you for this day and thank you now for this hour. And we praise you because we understand that this is the day that you have made. And because of this, we will rejoice and be glad in it. But God, we even just thank you now even for our community. We lift up all of our community partners and all that are in our community, that you would just bless our city and move in a mighty way. The heaven and father, you already know all of the dilemmas and we present it to you and knowing that it will work out according to your will. Oh God, we thank you and we bless you now. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Be seated, ladies and gentlemen. Next item is to say thank you to Pastor Jordan. Pastor Jordan, we appreciate you being here. Pastor Jordan was born in Macon, but received his high school education up in Forsyth, Mary Persons, but went on to Emmanuel Bible College, Gordon College, and Macon Junior College, kind of a Rhodes Scholar, and furthered his education. Majoring in Christian Education, graduated from Crossroads Bible Institute. He has assumed the awesome responsibility now of lead pastor at Center Hill Baptist Church, and we look forward to working with you, sir. Been there since late seventeen, is that right? So November seventeenth, I believe, was your first sermon there. And look forward to working with you, and thank you very much for being here tonight. Our two 4-H students, as I call your name, if you'd stand and let us recognize you. Christopher Martin is an eighth grader at Ballard Hudson Middle School. Christopher's been active in the 4-H club for three years. He competes at the District Project Achievement in Workforce Preparation and Career Development category. He speaks about becoming an engineer and has placed first in the past two years at this public speaking competition. He's also a member of the band at Ballard Hudson and loves to play football. He maintains all A's in school, dedicated to pushing himself academically. And we are glad that you are here with us tonight, sir. Then Cambria Foster is a seventh grader at Miller Magnet Middle School. Cambria has also been an active 4-H member for the past two years. This past summer, Cambria spent the week at Rock Eagle Summer Camp where she faced her fear of snakes by holding three of them. She's also been a 4-H officer for the past two years, loves participating in various community events, active in her school, serves as leader of seventh grade classes. She completed the 4-H Consumer Judging Team and placed fourth in competition that focuses on consumer habits and making good spending decisions. It is a wonderful asset to the community in Bibb County 4-H. Thank you, Cambria, for being here with us, and congratulations. In this day and age when we hear so much bad stuff about young people, isn't it refreshing to see two such wonderful young people? And thank you for being here with us tonight. Mayor Protem, did you have something?
Yes, ma'am. I just didn't want to overlook Pastor Jordan, who I also work with at Department of Juvenile Justice, doing my imaginary job that folks said I never had. And I failed the last time to mention Lieutenant Romanowski, who came down here with those kids who won the championship in Florida. So it's just a pleasure to see you, sir.
Good. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Appreciate your mentioning that. Next, I need to add a couple of items to our agenda. These are late additions, and even though one or two of them may have been on a previous agenda that was published, we want to officially add them tonight. These items of new business include two 9-1-1 funding bills, and they are a resolution updating and authorizing 9-1-1 charges on the telephone services and wireless enhanced 9-1-1 charges other than prepaid wireless. And then the other one is about prepaid wireless. Those we are adding tonight as items T and U to the agenda. Can I get a motion? And there's an item W, which is the ordinance that was approved, the budget out of operations and finance yesterday?
You mentioned, I was hoping we could move it to item B on our agenda.
I was gonna get to that momentarily. Let me add these three to the agenda. Can I get a motion to add these three items to the agenda? By Schlesinger, second by when, all in favor of adding these to the agenda for action tonight, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it. Then there was a request, Mayor Protem says he needs to leave momentarily and would like for us, if possible, to move item W. I'm sorry. Commissioner Bibbins said we may need to leave momentarily and wants us to move item W, which is the budget, up to the front of the agenda. Can I get a motion by Allen, second by Schlesinger, to move that item up to the front of our old business items? And we'll hurry to get the, all in favor of doing that, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, so we'll do that budget item first when we get to old business. So let me hurry then and move on with the business at hand. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. And our minutes of the pre-commission meeting of August 7th and regular commission meeting of August 7th have been issued and sent out. Are there any corrections, additions? If not, can I get a motion to approve those minutes as prepared by Schlesinger? Second by when, all in favor of approval of the minutes, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it and the minutes are approved. Next, we have invited guest, and is Gwen Westbrook or someone from the NAACP here with us? Oh, there's Gwen, there you are. Good. Gwen Westbrook has an award that she wanted to make on behalf of the local chapter of the NAACP. So at this time, let me call on Ms. Westbrook. Ms. Westbrook?
Evening. Thank you for allowing me this time to present this award. I was here a few months ago bringing some information to the community in reference to Avalon Mobile Home Parks. And you all may not have thought it was important for me to bring that to the commissioners at the time, but it was a very important issue because the people in those communities, they were actually taxpayers. And they were bought mobile homes, and their mobile homes were actually, after they bought their mobile homes, well, the property was put up for collateral before they bought the mobile homes, and then they started selling them after they borrowed money on mobile homes. But we, the people in the resident filed a complaint with the NAACP. And what we did was, we met with the residents there, the NAACP. We reached out to the commissioner in that area, Ms. Elaine Lucas, and she came on board. She was dedicated and to making sure that equality for those people were upheld. She attended all the meetings that was held with the tax commissioners, with the courts, with our district attorney. And so I wanted to present this award because we have resolved that case. Over twenty-something thousand, well, the owner has met with the NAACP, the local branch, and I have gotten the state also involved. But Ms. Lucas was there faithfully and diligently to all the meetings to make sure that these people got what they deserve. I'm here to report that over twenty-something thousand dollars in back taxes have been paid for the residents that live in that community. Over twenty-something thousand dollars have been dismissed out of court. Those residents, all of them have received their titles. Everyone did not file complaints with our office because some of them were afraid, but they benefited from the efforts of the NAACP and along with the help of our commissioner, Elaine Lucas, in that area. So we've gotten that done. They've allowed the NAACP to take part in the changing, making amendments to their lease and their rental agreements. And they've also allowed us to choose the attorney that handles their eviction. So I've made my recommendations to the owners, to who I thought would be fair to both the tenants and the property owners. So at this time, I would like to present this award to Ms. Lucas, Commissioner Lucas, for standing by the NAACP. I was threatened to step out of this case. If I didn't, I would be sued, but the owner got involved, and he was very, he's done so much to make sure that these people were treated the way they were supposed to be treated. And at this time, this award says, "On behalf of the Macon-Bibb NAACP, we would like to express our appreciation for your commitment and dedication to ensure fairness, equality, and a better quality of life to the residents of Avalon Community, presented to Commissioner Elaine Lucas, August 21st, 2018." Thank you so much for standing by.
Let me first of all say thank you so much. And I think I read that on the agenda, but maybe I just thought my name was somewhere else on there, because I was talking to Mallory Jones up there, and I said, "Did you see this on here?" And he said, "Well, I saw it on there." But this is truly an honor. I am a member of the NAACP, and I encourage other folks to join before you need this organization. And when people call me and my husband in the middle of the night asking for the number for the NAACP, you know what I tell them? What I ask them? I ask them if they are a member. If you're not a member, you're part of that problem that weakens organizations like this that help not only poor people, not only black people, but anybody who comes to them, because Avalon has white and black residents who are being impacted in a negative way. So y'all, get your mind out of the prior years and come on into this century and support an organization that's committed to helping everybody every day. And I want to commend them because I know the kind of work. She does a full-time job, she and her volunteers. And then she does another full-time job advocating on behalf of folks in this community. So my membership is there from now on, and I'm going to try and go for the lifetime membership, because we do make $2.80 an hour down here. So I should be able to get my membership paid up pretty soon, you know, in a few years. But thank you so very much. Those people in that trailer park felt like people were overlooking them, that they had no recourse, and they came to y'all and y'all helped them. And it was my honor to be a part of it and help in whatever way that I could. Thank you. And I accept this on behalf of all of the commissioners. I've talked with several of them about the situation, and they were in agreement that something needed to be done, and y'all did it. So thank you so very much. It's an honor to serve.
Thank you, Ms. Westbrook. Appreciate you being here. Congratulations, Commissioner Lucas. Next item on the agenda, public comments on agenda items. First, got Mike Odom wants to talk to us about the budget and the charter. Mr. Odom, you're recognized for five minutes, sir.
Second, I thought gentleman named Steve Taylor was up first. Yes, I would like to talk about the budget, and I'm disappointed in this budget. We're here today because the commissioners have annually ignored a burgeoning bubble of unsustainable spending. Very little has changed. Look, this budget is a fool's errand. It provides no provision for restoring losses to the depleted reserves. It makes no provisions for future obligations that we're facing. It requires 100% of everything forecast to come in as planned. That's irresponsible. If the assumptions don't fall in the right direction, we have no savings, we'll be insolvent. I heard the commissioner saying, "We don't want to be back here next year asking for another budget increase." I can promise every citizen listening to my voice, this commission will be back wanting to get in our pockets. This is an irresponsible budget. I think there should be a motion made at the next meeting and approved to avoid this calamity. It should say that the Finance Committee in January should present a 1231 report of where expenditures were. I don't care about the revenues. Expenditures, any unfavorable variance should be deducted from the remaining part of the fiscal year. Bowden, God, course, should be closed. The two executives in this administration responsible for spending, that's the county manager and the mayor, should receive the same reduction in their compensation that DFAX did. That's a 50% cut. Then after we've had a full year of meeting our budget, a full year of no asking for tax increases, then those compensations can be reduced. I'd again like to talk about the charter and compliance with it. My comments by the media have been called accused, claimed, assertions. Look, I graduated Georgia Tech and Harvard Business School. I deal in the exact science of mathematics and numbers. I don't make accusations or assertions. I make statements of fact. Most of us in grammar school learned that eight times one is always eight. It always is, always will be. When you look at what's been going on, this administration's gone to extraordinary lengths to convince us to forget fifth grade math, that now eight times one is 14. Let's look at, let's break it down. Stay with me. Let's look at the mayor's own words in an article earlier this week. He said they made the 20% mandate in 2016 when they spent $146 million. This would have reached the number two years faster than the charter allowed. If you start with 166 million, which is right, take a 20% reduction, which is right, and you use the appropriate CPI, the number comes up to 135 million, not 146. Folks, eight times one is eight. They were using, when I saw the spreadsheet they used, they were using erroneous information, very inflated. They used CPIs that were 2.5% or greater. We hadn't had a CPI over two in the previous three years. Eighteen and nineteen are projected to be two and over. If you compound that information, it has a tremendous inflationary effect. Now, if they spread it out and said, "The budget number's 146 in 2019, so we spent 146 this year." No, no, you've got to discount that back. Take the inflation adjustment out of it. Secondly, this has been a very disconcerting process that we've gone through. I don't like that the race card's been thrown by some of the commissioners here. I believe, if my eyes weren't deceiving me, taking this microphone where men, women, and all races saying, "Please don't raise my taxes." I don't appreciate that. We've had embarrassing conduct up here with temper tantrums and false narratives and misconstruing information. Look, we need honest adults up here making the tough decisions. That's called leadership. Anything else? I don't care what you call it, it's politics. There's a significant group of people who are now frustrated with our government. We're going to pursue whatever we can to influence the changes. If you want to call them your accountability partners, that'll be fine. My conclusion is, is this is a foolish, foolish budget. One is always eight. I happen to bring with me a card that was published in 1936 by the mayor of City of Macon, listing the mayor and all the aldermen. The mayor, Herbert Smart. Him, Charles Bowden. Go on down and list it. The second ward alderman, Clarence E. Odom. That was my grandfather, 82 years ago, sat in these chambers. I mean, there were great men there. Charles Bowden, Calder Clay, Harry Chapman, T.T. Karstoff, and H.W. Pittman, Ben Waller. Two comments. Under their leadership, this city and county flourished. What is going to be your legacy, gentlemen and ladies? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Odom. We appreciate your time and appreciate your comments, sir. Mr. Willie Frazier? Mr. Frazier also wants to talk to us about the budget, revenues, and black. I think the...
How you doing, mayor and commissioners? I appreciate once again being before you. I had something similar that I wanted to say about the budget as well, because I sat in those meetings as well. And the budget that were passed, okay, we can deal with. But what I'm understanding is that by the budget being passed, there were quite a few things that were cut, that were started on by the city and this county and this commission. You know, one thing about it is, we putting in a lot of work in our city to try to change things. And when we make those decisions to change things, we got to make sure that we have enough money to maintain those things. Because once you tear something up, once you take something down, or once you rebuild something, then there's no way to go and pull the money out of that and expect for it to sustain itself. You know, when I look at it, then if you're not going to take it all the way and make it prosperous, then why even test it? And speaking of that, you know, that's why I speak so much about Pleasant Hill. At this moment right here, that historical society is being dismounted. But when I heard in the meeting that there was not going to be enough money, 10% of money going to be taken away from the Little Richard Penner House, then why not leave the house as the original house? And if you don't have enough money to fund it, guess what? We in Pleasant Hill and the people of Pleasant Hill, we took care of each other as a community. We took care of each other like family. Some of you are from Pleasant Hill, mayor, right? Elaine Lucas, I knew a lot of you names that were signed on stuff, that was a part of a lot of the historical things in Pleasant Hill. You know, the Oz Jones Center, Booker T. Washington Center and all that, those are things that you used to stand for, and it's closed now. But I plan on getting together and pulling together a group, and we're going to go until we find the people that was over there. We're going to find a way to clean up that community, and we're going to find a way to do the things that we need to do and be communicable again. And the thing about it, if you don't have enough money to turn around and take care of our community, then give it back to us. All of those historical things, all those things in that community are all around Macon. The thing that got me interested in a lot of things is because I found out by being a volunteer, that a lot of people are taking these monies and not doing what is right and what is necessary. So my thing is, every time I'm before this commission, I'm finding ways to reveal that because there are changes that need to be made. I know the great city that Macon used to be, and I'm going to be one individual, no matter what your color is, that's going to turn around and turn this community back in what it used to be. We was always great. We was always talked about. Everywhere I went, no matter where I went out of town, Macon was always the place to be, and it's going to be the place to be again. All of you that are snuffing this money up out of this city, all of you that are turning around and doing crooked things for your own good and stuff like that, then understand what I'm here for. That I've never spoken about, but I'm speaking about it now because I pay attention to everything. And I'm tired of Macon going down, 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 and people gaining wealth in every which way. We need money. We need help. All these entities that you all are helping, that's taking this historical money and all of this other money up out of this city, I intend to stop them as well. Yeah, they're great entities and stuff like that and got a lot of money. I don't have no money, but I have a voice. And I'm tired of seeing Macon go broke while other people gain all kind of wealth. And we will find a way to change that, no matter how broke I am. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. We appreciate you being here. He had also some non-agenda items he wanted to talk about. Ms. Sarah Hunt? Ms. Hunt wants to talk to us about items A, B, C, and D under old business, I believe.
Good evening and thank you very much for giving me this time. I'm calling on the commissioners, the eight of you that are here, to please override the mayor's veto. The expenses that they say is going to cost to make the change is not true. Secondly, there are other ways to notify people besides mail and stamps, email and text messages. Just about everybody has a cell phone. Those people own SSI, and they get WIC and food stamps, they get a free phone, and they get free texts. And all of the other agencies, Georgia Power, the telephone companies, the water department, they all will text you and email you. And so you can do the same thing. Now, the water authority told me they didn't have the ability to notify people before they cut their water off. And I showed them that they had a system that they could use to do that. And since they have been doing that, the cutoff rate has dropped over 56%. So you can utilize the same methods for notifying your people when they're late on their payments for garbage without using a stamp. You can notify them of the changes through text message and email. You already have the computer systems. We paid millions of dollars for it, so use it. Don't just have it sitting there. You got some folks sitting down there snacking and chatting, and they can be working. Secondly, I need to understand 2020 has not come yet, and you've already taken money out of the 2020 splotch to fund something in 2018. You could be dead in 2020. We have no guarantee that we're going to be here in 2020. So how can you spend something that you haven't even collected yet? Then in D and E, you're taking money out of 2023 splotch. 2023 has not even come yet. You don't know what you're going to get in 2023. So I'm thinking that's how, another reason why we're in the predicament we're in, over projecting and overspending. If you don't have the money, don't spend it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt. We appreciate you being here. Appreciate your comments. Marvella Ivory, you're next, and want to talk to us about several items you recognized for five minutes.
Evening. Mayor Ricker and commissioners. Items 10, D, and D through F regarding sales of various properties. My question is, the funds received from those sales, will you use those funds to help fill in the gap of the budget? Selling the fire station on Forsyth Road, a property... Selling the fire station on Forsyth Road, a property behind Macon Bibb County's vehicle maintenance facility, and the Macon Baptist Association property located at ten eighty-second Street. Will you use the sales from those properties to fill in the gap of the budget? And D through F.
This is your time to talk to us, Ms. Ivory. This isn't question and answer. I mean, you, you point out concern-
You don't have an answer though?
No, ma'am, that's under new business. You're talking about new business that's going to be referred tonight to the committee, so-
Oh, okay, okay, okay. Well, I am concerned about the library being closed. I'm concerned about different things that have been cut. I spoke to you sometime ago, maybe a month or so ago, in trusting that the quality of life in Macon would continue. But we find ourselves in this very, it's a very challenging budget situation. I'm also concerned, since we find ourselves in this situation, has a, um, accounting audit been done so that we don't find ourselves back in this same cycle where things are being cut? And our residences, our residents in Macon Bibb are just, we're just at a, at a point of... I'm, I'm, I'm just almost at a loss for words as to why we're in this situation. And what, what is the plan of action for our leaders to combat the budget and make sure all those lying items are taken care of so that the Tubman Museum stays open, we can reopen the Booker T. Washington Center, and, um, we can reopen the Washington Library? And all those things that make Macon what it is, we can move forward with that. I'm, I'm just, I'm just very, very, I'm just very, very disappointed. And I'm just at a loss for words because I'm just so disappointed.
Well, thank you, Ms. Ivory. We appreciate you being here, appreciate your comments. She also had, had some non-agenda items she wanted. Jake Farrell. Want to talk to us about the budget you recognize for up to five minutes, Mr. Farrell?
Eric, thank you, County Commissioners. My recommendations for our great city, I'm going to be fairly quick. Number one, pension reform. Develop a strategy to terminate the current defined benefit plan and concurrently develop, develop a plan to implement a four-fifty-seven B for current employees and a plan to implement either an annuity program or a combination annuity and four-fifty-seven B for retirees. A key element here is the current defined benefit plan is underfunded and must be made whole first and foremost. Once it is made whole, the defined benefit plan, once it's fully funded, it will still take about twelve to eighteen months to terminate the defined benefit plan and implement a four-fifty-seven B. Quote, "If we are going to keep our promise to retirees as well as current workers, pension reform is essential. It's not a case of should we reform, it's a case of doing it as quickly as possible to protect our citizens. Must be managed very carefully. In the end, if executed correctly, the plan sponsors Macon Bibb will no longer have risk, administrative burden, or financial burden. Control will be in the hands of the individuals who own the poli, who own the plan. Determine a strategy now, stick to it, but be flexible to modify it along the way. Number two, all departments must have some skin in the game. One year ago, the three-mil increase was going to help the city avoid dipping into the reserve fund, which stood at seventeen million at the time in May of seventeen. Well, one year later, we not only consumed the three-mil increase, but we consumed approximately thirteen million of the seventeen million reserve, leaving the reserve cupboard pretty bare. Number three, form a splotched oversight committee of local citizens and businesspeople. Currently, we have two completed splotch projects that are requiring added staff and maintenance and operating dollars from the millage tax pool. Implement a moratorium on splotch-funded projects requiring an increase in staffing and operating costs. Must have fiscal responsibility which encompasses the bigger picture, all the pieces, not just the individual project of the day. Major focus of splotch is to ease the tax burden on the public, not to increase it. Number four, actual spending for two thousand nineteen must be at least two million less than fiscal year two nineteen, two thousand eighteen actual. Form a hotel, motel tax committee to review the use of the four million, approximately four million dollars that's accumulated every year. I believe all the tourist attractions such as the Tubman, the Little Richard House, Theater Macon, Douglas Theater, Museum of Arts and Sciences, and many others should share in that four thousand, four million dollar pool on a yearly basis. Explore the possibility of using splotch funds to support our museums and other wonderful historical cultural events by, um, contributing to each of their selected organization's capital spending plans. I think it's consistent with the splotch requirements. Investigate the potential benefits of retrofitting the Washington Library to make it the premier library in the state of Georgia, where at least one satellite location could possibly be closed and we end up having really the top-notch library and Washington Library. It's a good library now, but it could be even greater. Encourage all the nonprofits to form foundations if they don't already have one so that they can be self-funding down the road. Number eight, explore feasibility of selling Bowden Golf Course and the Herbert Smart Airport. I believe we have been subsidizing the golf course at a clip of three hundred thousand dollars a year. Over a five-year period, that's one point five million. That could have gone to, again, handle the underfunding of the pension plan. We have to explore ways to fund the defined benefit plan at a faster rate. Can we use hotel motel tax? I don't know that answer. Explore the possibility of selling naming rights to significant facilities in our city. I could see the Coliseum being called the, being called the Geico Coliseum. Peyton Anderson Auditorium, the Knight Foundation, um, Senior Citizen Center. Central City Park being named Navisant Health Central City Park. Sponsors for these and other such meal, such as Meals on Wheels could be had. I want to say a special thanks to County Commissioners, in particular Valerie and Mallory, who have been willing to listen to many ideas from our citizens throughout the last several weeks. The journey to right the ship of Macon Bibb is not going to be easy, but it must begin now. But it'll be fun as well. We can do it if we all pull together and are willing to make the necessary sacrifices. Our citizens deserve it. They are footing the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Farrell. Thank you very much. We appreciate your time and appreciate your comments. Uh, finally, Mr. Tompkins, Louis Frank Tompkins, wants to talk to us about, uh, the reduction to the transit authority. You recognize up to five minutes, sir.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, thanks for allowing me this opportunity to address you this evening. My comments are not personal. Some of them are factual. Some of them come from my heart. Some of them represent constituents, the bus riders. I feel it's important to note that I, as chairman of the board of directors of the Macon Transit Authority, do speak for that authority and those persons affiliated with that authority. First of all, thanks to each of you for your entire efforts in providing leadership and due diligence in the operation of our government. Secondly, the motto of the Macon Transit Authority is, "We keep Macon moving." Really? Realistically, to do so without adequate funding is not completely possible for our clients and ridership who depend on transit services or our operations. We all know the importance and the essences that we provide and the services that we provide. So there's no need for me to go through that. We've heard all of that rodeo before. However, there is an impactful decision that the Commissioners will make this evening that will have a very far-reaching effect on transit operations and those who depend on it. I kind of put in place a few bullet points that should be shared with you. And please, I'm not infringing on your intelligence because I'm sure that many of you are aware of some of them. This is the second year in which the Commissioners of the county government has cut the Macon Transit Authority budget by three hundred thousand dollars. So for two years, that amount comes to six hundred thousand dollars. These amounts of monies, if we receive them, are matched by the Federal Transit Administration. Six hundred thousand times two equals one point two million dollars less for our operational budget during this two-year period. So if you just break that down into yearly operational costs, it'll come to the same thing, but you can always divide it by years. So basically, if monies that can be matched or cut, we are left without the matching funds from the Federal Transit Administration. Today, our administrative staff are riding right now as I speak and have been riding all day today, as well as studying, again, the ridership of each route to make determinations which routes are going to be affected because of this three hundred thousand dollar cut. So, lastly, the results of the decision to cut three hundred thousand dollars will be widespread and deeply felt as fixed, as well as paratransit routes will be affected. Fixed and paratransit, paratransit and fixed. The buses and the livelihoods of many citizens in our city will adversely be affected. Please think and consider, please think and reconsider tonight and help us keep Macon moving. Macon and Bibb County are depending on you and so are we. Thank you and may God bless America and may God bless each of you. Good evening.
Mr. Tompkins, thank you very much. We appreciate you being here, appreciate your comments, sir. That's all of the public comments. We'll move on to reports from our standing committees. Uh, the first is operations and finance, uh, and that report will be given to us by Chairman Watkins. Chairman Watkins?
Thank you, sir. The Operations and Finance Committee met on August the fourteenth and took the following actions. The committee approved the request to refund ad valorem taxes paid on a property located at six, sixty-four twenty Mosley Dixon Road for the tax year of two thousand fourteen. The committee approved the following agreements. An agreement between Macon Bibb County and Mercer University for a nonprofit organizational lease of the Grand Opera House located at six fifty-one Mulberry Street. An agreement of extension with the Houston County Board of Health WIC Programs for lease of office space in the amount of twenty-one thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars for one year. A beverage agreement with Coca-Cola Bottling Company in the amount of twenty-one thousand dollars over three years. An agreement with August Construction, Inc. for landscaping and exterior reservations, renovations at the Macon Centralplex in the amount of one hundred and thirty thousand dollars. A consulting agreement for the BLIT Task Force Initiative with the Georgia Behavioral Health Services was amended and the following splotch projects were approved. An amendment to the professional service agreement with Rum Creek Enterprises, LLC to include assignment of additional project manager, manager duties for projects not identified as splotch projects. The sixteenth amendment to the splotch budget and timeline was approved. It included an appropriation of a hundred and thousand dollars to Parks and Recreation twenty-eighteen Bowden Golf Course improvements, an appropriation of seventy-one thousand to twenty-eighteen Cultural and Public Arts Grand Opera House improvements, and an appropriation of one hundred thirty-six thousand, three hundred dollars to Cultural and Public Arts for improvements to Luther William Field. An agreement with Wakefield Beasley and Associate Architects, Inc. for a needed, needs assessment for the Macon Bibb County Courthouse was approved in an amount not to exceed ninety-one thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. A professional services agreement with Flow Motion Trail Builders, LLC in the amount of eighty thousand for design and building services for a flow trail and bridge modification improvement and construction at Lake Tobosaki. The committee approved a set transfer of two thousand dollars from salary budget line items to cover part-time bailiffs and worker compensation. The committee also approved the following supplemental appropriations. Eight hundred and eighty, eighty-seven thousand dollars for the Levy Filter Blanket Project for the acceptance of funds payable pursuant to the two thousand eleven bond repayment agreement with the Macon Water Authority. Twenty-two thousand dollars from fund balance in the FY nineteen budget to the Superior Court Small Equipment Account for the purchase of digital court reporting equipment. Forty-eight hundred dollars from fund balance to the FY nineteen budget to the Probreak Court Small Equipment Account for the purchase of digital court reporting equipment. And ten thousand dollars from fund balance in the FY nineteen budget to sponsor GCAP students in attending the National League of Cities Annual Youth Conference. This concludes the report of Operations and Finance Committee.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Watkins. Uh, do you want to make an, uh, an ad lib report of your meeting yesterday, sir, just of, of-
Uh, yes, the committee met yesterday, um, Monday at ten-thirty to approve budget amendments that total increases of amount of three-point-oh even.
Uh, thank you. Uh, questions of Chairman Watkins about that? Uh, here none. The next committee is Economic Community Development. Uh, that commi, uh, report will be given to us by Chairman Lucas. Chairman Lucas?
Thank you, Miss Mayor and fellow Commissioners. The Economic and Community Development Committee, uh, at our last meeting heard a, uh, very informative report from the library director on the necessity of funding the libraries. And our committee endorsed, uh, the emergency funding, uh, for the libraries. Um, an item on the Cultural Arts Board was removed, uh, from the agenda. And at our next meeting, we will, uh, add those items on the census and parking and a number of other updates for the next Economic and Community Development Committee meeting. And that ends our report.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Lucas. And, uh, Chairman Shepard is not here to give the Public Safety Committee a report, so I'll call on Vice Chairman Lucas to, to give that public safety report as well.
The Public Safety Committee met August fourteenth, twenty-eighteen and took the following action. The committee heard a report from David Cook, uh, Macon Bibb County District Attorney regarding the partnership agreement with the Bibb County Board of Education to develop the School Justice Partnership Agreement. This partnership will work with the District Attorney's Office, the Bibb County School District, and Bibb County Juvenile Court to, uh, uh, see how rehabilitative services and programs uh, can be matched with the needs of offending youth. And these are, uh, for nonviolent, routine kinds of things that students, uh, in the past have been put out of school for or had to go to juvenile court. These will now be handled with wraparound services under this new partnership. Uh, and this concludes the report of the Public Safety Committee.
Uh, thank you, Vice Chairman Lucas. Uh, and the final report is Facilities and Engineering and that report will be given to us by Chairman Jones. Chairman Jones?
Yes, sir. Facilities and Engineering met also on August the fourteenth. We had one item. Committee approved the Eagle Scout Project, a wonderful project from Eric Woodford, which will be the construction of a tree identification display at many of the trees in Amerson River Park so that people can identify the trees and, and know some history about each tree. so that people can identify the trees and know some history about each tree. That completes the report.
Thank you, Chairman Jones. Next item on the agenda is a consent agenda. These are alcohol beverage applications for licenses. Each of these applications is accompanied by all of the required documentation. The business license, the Business Development Service certification that the appropriate license amount has been tendered. The planning and zoning certificate to certify that the zoning is compliant. The distance measurement form from the county engineer to say that the location meets all of the distance requirements in the law. The ad that was run in The Telegraph, as well as the sheriff's certification of a satisfactory background check. So each of these licenses is accompanied by all of that documentation. The first one is an application by Bob Levitt on behalf of Jet Food Stores of Georgia Incorporated, located at 4765 Riverside Drive. And that is for beer and wine package sales to go at that location. The second is from Min Ho Lee as applicant for H&amp;H Mart at 2700 Riverside Drive. And that is for beer package sales to go from that location. And the final one is from Manabon Patel. The business name is Parsmani LLC doing business as the Exxon Food Mart at 3004 Deborah Ann Drive. And that is for beer and wine package sales to go from that location. The committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the issuance of those licenses signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it and those licenses will be issued as requested. That brings us to old business and by unanimous consent, the first item of old business is item W, I believe, the budget. And I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to adopt an amended budget and appropriate sums for the operation of the Macon-Bibb County Government for fiscal year 2019 to provide for repeal of conflicting ordinances and to provide for other lawful purposes.
The committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Winn, got you first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I presume this will probably be the last time we have a discussion on the budget as a whole tonight. And I wanted to make some comments. First, I wanted to note the apathy of the citizens already now that the three mills was approved and a budget's about to be approved for that amount. I wish the community would stay involved and come here like they have been over the last few weeks, supporting and listening to us and giving comments. But it's set in and you're not going to complain again until next year when this comes around. Let me just say this, some strange comments. I'm going to go back and forth. But I worked for a major employer here in Macon, Geico Insurance Company. And I thought when we went through the budget process there, that was the most difficult process I'd ever seen until this. This was the most convoluted, difficult process that I've ever seen as far as discussion of a budget. And I am here to say that I am disappointed in the result. As you knew from the start, before I was sworn in as a commissioner, I stood in the well and I talked about reducing expenses to the outside agencies because I felt like those agencies were not where the taxpayers' money should be going. That's not where the taxpayers thought it was going, to be honest with you. They thought it was going to be for firemen and policemen. We haven't addressed things like, that has been addressed in this budget. It needs to be continued to be addressed down the road. This shouldn't stop now. This is just the beginning. We haven't touched on or even included anything on the pension plan revision. That should have been done. It has to be done. Should have been done 10 years ago. We cannot keep kicking it down the road. I want to refer to the mayor's article in the paper today. Some of those things are just not fair, not right, inaccurate. This has been kicked down the road. This budget process is kicking things down the road since consolidation. Nothing has changed over the last three or four years since consolidation, except that we're taking money out of our reserve fund. And that's where my focus is here right now tonight. When we started our discussion process yesterday, the first thing I said to our commissioners was our reserve fund is in critical condition. That needs to be our focus along with some other things. We are, as the mayor has put it, one disaster away from being broke, seriously. Thirty-three million dollars down to four in four years is not the way to go. And we have not provided in this current budget to start building our reserve. We've got to start saving again like you would in any business to make sure you've got to have funds for the emergencies. And yes, we'll have them. We just don't know when they're going to happen or what they're going to be or how much they're going to cost us. So the fact that we've done nothing to ensure adding something back to the reserve with this budget concerns me. It's concerned me from the beginning of this discussion. The amounts we've reduced the outside agencies by, the funding to them, is a start in the right direction. Nothing against them. I've said that all along, although people don't hear that. I think they're important to our community, but I think they need to be standalone. They need to be self-funded. We will have those organizations around. If the community wants them, they will support them, trust me. If they don't, they won't be here much longer. We've got to let the community get involved and be a part of this process. I think that we should look back now at what we did. And if we don't change, if we don't change more than we've already changed, we will be back here again in the same condition we're in now. This process will occur again. The room will be packed again because we'll worry about where the money's going to be, where the money's going to come from to pay for things. We're still not going to have any money in our reserve fund. We need to start looking at things on a monthly basis from here on in. This is why I wanted to be a commissioner, to help this community become fiscally sound again because I saw the direction it was going in. I can't do that by myself. I realize that. And I realize that it's going to take a lot of work by the commissioners to get us going in the right direction. We're going to do that. We're going to do that for this community because we want this community to be the community I love and want to continue living in because it has a lot of great things going on for it. But we've got to get our finances in order. We've got to do it quickly. We can't keep kicking it down the road. I'll use that term again. I did not want a property tax increase. I did not vote for that. I did not vote for a millage rate increase, same thing basically. I did not vote for that. And honestly, the budget will pass tonight, but because I'm disappointed in those things not being accomplished as far as the reserve fund, the addressing the pension, I'm probably going to say that I'm not going to vote in favor of the budget. It'll pass. It's just my point that I want to make, that I'm disappointed in some things that have not occurred with our budget planning. And I'm disappointed in how this process took place and how much pain and suffering the commissioners and the community have gone through to get to a point that's no better to me than it was when we started the process. I hope moving forward, we will improve the finances of this community and make it what it should be. And that's, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Winn. We appreciate your comments. Next is Commissioner Jones. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The budget has many good components to it. I think everyone agrees. We have to have Macon Transit. We have to have the library. We have to have a health department. And there have been many painful but necessary cuts and I commend all those who participated in that. The outside agencies are valuable assets to this community, the true outside agencies. And those three or four mentioned are not, in my opinion. I hope all of these outside agencies will set up a foundation today because we've been struggling with these kind of issues for four years now, or at least three. And we'll set up a foundation so that they don't depend on the tax dollars from the public to basically fund them or make sure that they're still sustainable. My concerns are very similar in that the reserves have gone down from $33 million to $4 million. Everybody knows that. That's a fact. Pensions, we've got unfunded liability of $92 million. $92 million. That's a lot of money, folks. We've got to address pensions. We've got to address healthcare. Yes, there is a healthcare committee and that's processing and meeting and recommending. But the pensions have got to be addressed for lots of reasons. And I got a note here from, I don't know if it was given to everybody, but it was addressed to me. It says, "Mayor and Commissioners," and it's from Andy Watson. He's a friend. I know him. I don't see him very often. He's a retired financial consultant. And he makes several good points about adjustments can be made today so that fear does not immobilize you, the Macon-Bibb citizens and employees. You now have an opportunity of a lifetime to execute wisely a master plan in best interest of all, long-term. Calling on you for your courage to consult with a pension consultant and your health benefits consultant. We've consulted with them all during the year. So that the employees still have a great retirement plan. So that the employees participate in the plan by contributing to the program. So that adjustments are made on the health insurance premium so that employees pick up a greater portion of the cost. So what are the benefits of the plan? The employees will still have their jobs and great benefits. Our plans, indisputably so, the healthcare and the pension plan, they're way beyond what we used to call the Cadillac Plan in public education. And if you compare these, and I have, to Monroe County and Houston County, ours is way far better, way far better. Other benefits, citizens still have their services. That's critical. Taxes are not increased or are increased minimally. You have developed a sustainable system. That's probably the most critical one for me because what we have with a pension plan is not sustainable. It's just not. All you've got to do is look across America. It's not sustainable. And this problem is not specific to Macon, Georgia. So he says he would volunteer as a retired financial consultant to meet individually or groups away from the crowd. And it sounds like a great offer to me where you could quietly think through the process without an audience. And he had a quote here that I've heard before, long ago. It's from President Calvin Coolidge. "There is no dignity quite so impressive and no independence quite so important as living within your means." And we haven't been doing that. So I will vote no on the budget, not because I don't think it has many good components, because we didn't take it far enough. We're still literally kicking the can down the road. This budget will make it for now, but if we don't make some substantive changes and start that process really immediately, there's no question, no question, we'll be right back here next year talking about a tax increase. And I shudder to think what that would do to this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. My pro temp Tillman, got you a light on next, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to thank this commission and all of our current leaders and even our former city council members who are even here tonight, who spoke up about this. Former city council Tom Ellington and former city council member Mr. Tompkins, who well before I got here designated $1.5 million to build the Philmon Thomas Park. And so as decisions that we make, those that will come behind us sometimes will implement and finish the things that we create and start. We've heard the mayor say a few times, "The buck stops with him." And for commissioners to sit here tonight and quote newspaper articles of something that essentially his administration quoted, it's a disservice to yourselves because his administration created this mess. Over the last three years, we extended a honeymoon season for him and our former county manager, who essentially resigned for giving us false, fake numbers that said we were going to bring in eight and 10 million dollars. And so we found ourselves arguing, debating with each other. We tried to be transparent and do something for the first time we hadn't done in the first three years. And that is hold budget hearings and meetings. We thought that would be very appreciative. We even placed it on social media, but the crowd chastised, called us names. And they still come and say various things based on our transparency of letting them see the process for the first time in three years. The CEO of Newtown Macon, my friend, he asked me, "What is going on? What is different this time that hadn't been different in the last three years? Well, y'all just passed a budget that's put in place in the month of May and by June, y'all had a budget. What is different this time?" And I shared with him the same thing. I just shared with you is that we stopped taking the word of those that were giving us false, fake numbers. And so we thought that people would appreciate it. If we held those hearings, Commissioner Watkins, who became the chairman, held those hearings. That committee held those hearings. And here we are in the middle of August, which the administration presented a budget in May. And we still talk about, "We'll be back next year." Well, if we go ahead and do the right thing, we won't have to be back next year. In fact, my concern is not whether I'm going to be here in the next election. It's about what we're going to do right now. I'm not allowing any citizen that plans on running for a future office to dictate what decisions I make up here. We're going to be here. And for the next two and a half years, we're going to be here until January of 2021. For those that may be confused, that that's the last day we'll be here, December 31st, 2020. And the new administration definitely will take place in January of 2021. So that's a long time for folks to be sitting around talking about, "You're making decisions costing your future political aspirations." We've got to take care of people's business right now and that's what we've been trying to do. We've been trying to show y'all how we do this and be as transparent as possible. And you can't cut services. And we, no commissioner here made a decision to zero out anybody. Nobody made that decision. But I think going forward, what we have to do as a commission going forward is we have to begin to work together as a unit. I have failed you. I have failed you. Commissioner Bibbins oftentimes would remind me of things that I'm just now willing to pay attention to. He's been right about a lot of things. But making decisions is not one of the things that I fail at. I'm not afraid to make a decision, to do what's right. Some people sit up here and want to do what's popular. We have to do what's right. And moving forward with this budget, amendments or whatever you want to call it is the right thing to do. And people will remember. People that have stood with others on the campaign trail will remember as we move forward. So you can easily make a decision, but don't be fooled by newspaper headlines and articles. Know truly how we got here in this situation. This administration misrepresented these numbers. And so tonight, we can begin to undo some things and get on the same track together and work together to talk to our local delegation to possibly separate the authorities and the powers of this administration and this commission and get back on track. Many folks come down here, "Y'all need to realize, this is the entire commission. The mayor is a part of the commission. He makes up the commission." But a lot of people separate us every day by saying, "Thank you, Mr. Mayor and commission." He's a part of the commission. If we make a tie vote, he breaks the vote. He chairs all our meetings. And so he is a part of this commission. But what I would like to see going forward in that newspaper article is say, "I made a mistake that I trusted someone I shouldn't have trusted. They resigned. And as a result, we're trying as commissioners to correct the wrong that he led us to." That would sound much better as opposed to just having us fight amongst each other and just so we can work better. But again, because later in the vote, there's a veto. And so once again, he's shown that he's not willing to possibly work together. And so once again, he's shown that he's not willing to possibly work together with commission. So we have to begin to stand together. And if we don't recognize and see that, then maybe y'all will be back in this situation again after 2020. But I won't, because I'm not afraid to make a decision. Thank you.
Point of personal privilege, I don't want my silence to indicate acquiescence in what the mayor Protem said. I resent the insinuation that the administration deliberately presented false information or false facts or fake news. I will honestly admit to you, I'm not, not any better able to project and predict the future than are you. So when we try to present figures of what revenue we anticipate, and we give those figures six weeks in advance for the commission to look at and review the same information and the same facts and figures and come up with different figures if you want. So just to assert that I resent the inference that I have deliberately provided the commission with false information, and I didn't want my silence to indicate acquiescence to that. Commissioner Bibbins, I have you next, sir.
I am going to have to leave shortly, but I'd just like to call for the vote.
There, there's, there's no, no other lights on, you were the, you were the last one, so the, presume you're ready to vote. We do need six votes, I think.
Six.
No, ma'am. We need, we need six, six votes to, to pass the budget, because we are appropriating additional money in the three mills, so we need six votes to pass the budget, and we've got to have it done as the tax commissioner said, tonight's the night, we cannot take another vote later. So got to have six, six votes to pass this. Those that are in favor and want to vote for the budget would vote yes. Those that do not and want to vote, would oppose the budget would vote no. Does anybody want to roll call vote or can I, roll, roll call vote? So I'll, I'll start on my left, Mayor Protem Tillman, how do you vote, sir? Votes yes. Commissioner Watkins, how do you vote? Votes yes. Commissioner Allen? Votes no. Commissioner Bibbins?
Yes.
Votes yes. Commissioner Jones?
No.
Votes no. Commissioner Lucas?
Yes.
Votes yes. Commissioner Schlesinger?
Yes.
Votes yes. Commissioner Wynn?
No.
Votes no. I think we had six yeses and, one, two, three, four, five. Five. Please, please, Ms. Hunt, please, Ms. Hunt, I'm not going, not going to ask you again, but please refrain from comments in the gallery, we're trying to conduct business best we can up here. And I would, Ms. Hunt? Thank you, ma'am, I appreciate your cooperation with us. We need at this point, ladies and gentlemen, a, a motion for reconsideration on the vote we've just taken. It's that, it's that important, we can't move on to other items on the agenda. Right, ma'am? And if, if, if there is a, a motion to reconsider, that's certainly what we need at, at this point. If there's not, then we have to, have to move on. We've got a, a motion by Commissioner Schlesinger for reconsideration and a second by Commissioner. Is there further discussion about this? Mayor Protem Tillman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. For many weeks privately, publicly, you've said to commission members, blame me, put it on me. But when that's done, you, all of a sudden, you want to take it personally.
No, sir, no, sir, I'm just, I'm just objecting to the character, no, sir, I'm objecting to the characterization that I deliberately misrepresented something. You can call me stupid, just don't call me crooked.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I think what I was clear about is that-
Yeah, go ahead, sir.
What I was clear about is that the county manager, former county manager resigned, and he was supposed to be a financial expert and gave you fake information and false information. And in turn, you possibly shared, so my thing is, when you say to all of us at some point, blame me and just move forward, so, you know, so apparently you don't want me to blame you. And so I made the point, but I just thought in, in that this commission needs to realize that if we don't get the house in order, we can't depend on nobody else to get it in order. And I yield.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protem. I, I'm advised that Commissioner Shepherd is on the phone, and I'll call on the county attorney to, to say under what circumstances a member can vote electronically.
Give me one second.
You're asking me to vote on the budget?
Yeah.
That's what we're going to ask you to vote on, if you'll just hold on one minute, I'll let you know when it's time for you to vote, okay?
Reset being ordered?
Okay, the county attorney is looking it up on the charter to read about how you can vote, and so as soon as he finishes reading that, I'm going to put you back on speaker, and I'll tell you when it's time to vote, okay? Okay, thanks.
The Macon, the open meetings and open records law provides that commissioners, following with respect to commissioners participating in open meetings via teleconference, as long as a quorum of commissioners is physically present at the meeting, a commissioner may participate by telephone conference because of health reasons or absence from the county, as long as the other requirements of the open meetings are met. However, unless there is an emergency or written note from a doctor indicating that the commissioner cannot attend the meeting due to health reasons, no commissioner may participate by telephone conference more than twice in one calendar year. So my knowledge, Mr. Commissioner Shepherd has not participated by teleconference any this year, so he is eligible to participate by teleconference.
And he is, he is home with health issues and could not be here.
That would not be germane if he, if that would be if he has done it more than twice, but he has not, so.
Is there further discussion on the motion under consideration, which is the budget? And now this is the, the vote for reconsideration. We have not yet taken a vote for reconsideration. So the first would be, got a motion and second to reconsider the question. Those in favor of reconsideration would vote aye, those opposed to reconsideration would vote no. Those in favor of reconsideration, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, we're going to reconsider, and we'll again go with a roll call vote. I'll start on the other end this time and allow Commissioner Shepherd, when we get to him, to vote electronically. Commissioner Wynn? How do you vote?
The vote.
Commissioner Wynn, how do you vote? No. Commissioner Wynn, votes no. Commissioner Schlesinger, how do you vote?
Yes.
Votes yes. Commissioner Lucas, how do you vote?
Yes.
Votes yes. Commissioner Jones, how do you vote?
No.
Votes no. Commissioner Bibbins, how do you vote?
Yes.
Votes yes. Commissioner Allen, how do you vote?
Votes no.
Commissioner Shepherd, by phone, how do you vote, sir?
Yes.
Votes yes. Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Votes yes. Commissioner, Mayor Protem Tillman?
Yes.
Votes yes. One, two, three, four, five, six, we have six yeses and three noes, the budget is adopted. Moving on, the next item on the agenda is item A, which is the override of the mayor's veto of the ordinance to go back to quarterly billing of the garbage bill. The question is whether or not to override the mayor's veto. Is there further discuss, hold on a minute, I guess I ought to ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to amend the Code of Ordnances of Macon Bibb County to return to a quarterly billing schedule for solid waste collection and disposal services to provide an effective date and to provide for other lawful purposes.
Is there further discussion? Mayor Protem Tillman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I shared some information with commission members and yourself about solid waste, and in particularly, this is part of one of the issues. Now, we haven't gotten a report back because the private information we share wanted, you know, I did not want to ask for a resolution for an investigation, and we've not received the information back from your administration or anyone. I did speak with a member that said y'all had just met with one of the parties this morning, and, and so what I would want to share with, with, with the commission as a record of fact that I have, and, and I think is very important pertaining to solid waste, is that the veto to go back to quarterly billing was essentially put in place to ask for the upfront money back on October 1st, 2017, and that was to ensure that the department would have adequate funding to do its job. We know that as of October, well, the collection of October 2017, November and December, that $60 plus the 240 for the upfront of 2018 was the $300 upfront fee. So what essentially happened is, is though, like services got worse. It appears that services became worse than what they had become in the past, and so several commissioners and folks just everywhere began to call and bombard our phones, and so I think it was just a frustration level on all of us to say, why did we, why, why did we ask for this upfront funding, and then it appears that the services got worse? Well, I have information that, that I would want to share probably with this commission based on this, and the one issue that I will share is on February the 12th of 2018, I think the services got worse because of the direction of the, of, of someone else, but I'll yield.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, I appreciate that. Commissioner Jones, got you next, sir.
Just, just briefly, the, the quarterly billing, we need to return to that, it's, the annual billing on top of your property taxes is punitive to seniors, people on fixed income, widowers, the middle class, the poor, even if they rent, the landlord's raising the rent to, to cover that. So it's not a fair system. We need to go back to quarterly, so I encourage all my colleagues to vote yes to override the veto.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Allen, got you next, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate it. Mr. Mayor, you know, when we put out this resolution, asked them for quarterly billing, and you overrode it, I got a little upset about that because we had six or seven members at the time to vote for this. We had enough to override the veto. I'm asking right now for a roll call vote that we override your veto.
Thank you. Commissioner Allen, Commissioner Lucas, got you next.
I'm, I'm ready to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. No, that, no other lights on, so assume you're ready to vote, start, start on the left-hand side this time. Mayor Protem Tillman, how do you vote? If you want, if you want to override the veto, you'd vote yes, if you want, if you want to sustain the veto, you'd vote no. How do you vote?
Yes.
Votes yes, Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Votes yes. Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Votes yes. Commissioner Bibbins?
Yes.
Votes yes. Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Votes yes. Commissioner Lucas?
Yes.
Votes yes. Commissioner Schlesinger?
Yes.
Votes yes. Commissioner Wynn?
Yes.
Votes yes. The veto is eight, the veto vote is eight, eight to, to zero, the veto is overridden. So that moves us on to item B, the resolution to approve the 16th Amendment to, to the SPOLOST timeline, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to approve the 16th Amendment to the 2018 SPOLOST project timeline and budget as presented by the SPOLOST project manager and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion?
Yes.
Hearing none, I assume you're ready to vote. All in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Item C is an ordinance to appropriate some additional funds for the work done at Luther Williams Field, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission approving and authorizing the appropriation of $136,300 from the 2017 SPOLOST bond proceeds and our 2018 SPOLOST revenues from 2020 Cultural and Public Auditorium Line item to 2018 Cultural and Public Luther Williams Field Line item and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion? Commissioner Lucas, got your light on.
Thank you. We approved $2.5 million for Luther Williams Ball Field. The entity that's playing down there is no, is not playing now. I think they've just recently announced that they will be back for a second season, and that is wonderful. I support all sports entities in this community. However, we are just finding out that this $136,300 is additional monies that just popped out of, I don't know where it popped out of, but for some fees that somebody didn't know needed to be paid. And to me, that's suspicious, and so I will not be voting for suspicious activity. I have not voted for stuff like this in the past, I'm not going to vote for it tonight. I, I think things like these, we don't need to just take at face value, that we need to look at them, take them to committee, thoroughly investigate why, you know, somebody was that, I don't know what the word is, but some, there is some term for someone who lets $136,300 slip through not being paid, and when we are paying to, putting 2.5 of SPOLOST money, which is also taxpayers' money, into a historic ballpark, and that doesn't cover it all. There's more money being asked for, so I'll be voting against this, and I will be requesting, if it passes, I will be requesting an audit of this particular function as we as commissioners have been doing on a number of these items that are suspicious. So I'll be voting no on that one.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucas. Again, I'm sorry that you find it suspicious as was explained in the committee meetings, the architects' fees. Clay Murphy was under the impression that the architects' fees were being paid by SRO, Steve Delay, because he, he presented the original design to us. So Clay acknowledged that the architects' fees of $136,000, he thought, were being paid by Steve Delay. Steve Delay had the, the impression that the, that the architects' fees were obviously to be paid by the one that builds the building, that, that Macon Bibb County. So the only person here is the one in good faith who prepared the plans that have been used to build the stadium, and now finds himself caught out in the, in, in the middle. And it also was pointed out that it's best for the architect to work for us because his loyalty then is to the one that's building the building and not to somebody else. So all of that was explained in committee, and I certainly hope that this commission will support the vote of the Operations and Finance Committee to honor that commitment to pay the architects' fees. Yes, ma'am.
We know that you would be in favor of spending money unaccounted for. So you, that, that's, that's your opinion on this, and either somebody's incompetent, they're negligent, something is wrong when you come up and you spend $2.5 million on a facility, and then you come up with another bill of $136,300- up with another bill of $136,300. Somebody should have known that a bill like this was on the way, and it should have been paid upfront, because I believe we approved the architectural work prior to the rest of the renovations on that. And I also have some questions about beer gardens and other kinds of things that are put in place for one particular entity. We didn't do those kinds of special things for the Georgia Doom. We didn't do those kinds of things for others. But then, another thing, this team has the concession rights down there, and if anybody else goes in to utilize it, the team, from what I understand, collects the concessions, operates the concession. Now, how is that fair to everybody else? Some people get sweetheart deals, and some people don't. I'm still voting no.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor of the ordinance would vote aye, and those opposed, ma'am?
Yes, you have a quorum.
You have a quorum?
You have a quorum.
Six? One, two, three, four, five, and...
And the mayor makes six.
Well, but I can't vote. Allen's here somewhere. Allen's here somewhere. I don't know. He may have gone to the bathroom. Good.
Right. Well, we, if you recall in the committee, the whole, we start meetings with six. The mayor, as was indicated earlier, is a member of the commission as well. And no, I mean, it's the same difference was my point. So, but if you would like, I can go see if the commissioner's in the hall, but I think we have enough to transact business because if the mayor is considered a member of the commission, we deal with this every day when we start meetings. Committee, the whole, it's the same rule. Six makes a quorum, and the mayor's a member, and so I think we have enough to transact business. It'll just require five votes.
I really need, I'm so, I'm, I'm so sorry. I am so sorry. You're not recognized to speak at this point. I need to take a recess. I'm going to declare a five-minute recess for me, please. I just need to take five minutes. So... I will. I need to take a chill pill. I need to take a chill pill. All right. We are back in session now. I guess the first thing I need to do is to apologize for losing my temper. Never good, never good to lose your temper. But I'm trying very hard to run a meeting and to have order and decorum. So you're not supposed to speak until you are recognized to speak, and you're not supposed to continue speaking after you're no longer recognized. So all I'm asking for is a little cooperation from members of the commission as I do the best I can to run a meeting and to conduct business with order and decorum. So I apologize for losing my temper, but I'm much better after having had a five-minute recess and a chill pill, and I see we've got a full, with the exception of Commissioner Schlesinger, we're all back in, all back in place now. Commissioner Lucas, do you have a point of parliamentary inquiry?
I had a previous question that I was asking before you got all bent out of shape. The county attorney can respond to what he was trying to find out.
I think the point is moot now. Isn't it since we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven?
Can you let him answer for himself?
Well, the charter says that six members of the commission make a quorum, and the charter also specifies that the mayor's a member of the commission, so we have under that direction. When we have five commissioners and the mayor and six members, we move forward. And that is also, I think, because, you know, it takes five people to vote a matter, and with that number, we could pass legislation. Of course, you couldn't lose any of them, so I think we would have been appropriate if we'd have gotten to move forward with the meeting, but now we are fully accounted for.
That's it.
Well, I don't know if it says in all instances, but I can show you where it says he's a member of the commission.
Just say it.
Well, it didn't say all instances, ma'am. I just said it says he's a member of the commission, you know, and, but it's because I can't say that, because we know the charter also says that the mayor can only vote in case of a tie.
Exactly what I'm referring to.
But I feel comfortable that it's appropriate when there's five members of the commission.
Does it say that, Mr. County Attorney?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. The question, question on the floor is item C, which is an ordinance to approve and authorize the $136,300 from SPOLOST funds, which we took from the auditorium to move over. So these are SPOLOST funds from an appropriate source that we're moving over to cover the additional expense of the architect's fees, which were inadvertently omitted. And I certainly, as I said before, I certainly hope that we won't not pay the architect. But that's just me. Commissioner Lucas, have you got further?
My question is, where is it being moved from?
The auditorium line in the same bucket. It was money that, I think Clay Murphy said that was saved on the roof repairs that were estimated, and we were able to move that money over to this to cover this excess at Luther Williams.
Okay. I just want that same consideration given when there are other things like that entrance, dangerous entrance out to Dolores Brooks Park that we've been, that's been voted on and approved for two or three years. It's not started yet, and we have been told over and over that there's not money available, but we can take money from somewhere else all of a sudden and vote to move it for the ballpark. That's just a difference that's being made.
No, ma'am. I'll have to, I'll have to say that we're waiting on Georgia Department of Transportation to give us approval for the plans. No further discussion. Lights are on. Those in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. If you don't, if you don't say anything, it's a yes vote under the roof. If you don't say anything, it's a yes vote. So the ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. If you want to appeal the ruling of the chair... I'll be happy, I'll be happy to. Item D is an ordinance to appropriate some additional funds for the Grand Opera House and repairs to the seats as part of the renovations. I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission approving and authorizing the appropriation of $71,000 from the 2017 SPOLOST bond proceeds and our 2018 SPOLOST revenues from 2023 Cultural and Public Grand Opera House Line item to 2018 Cultural and Public Grand Opera House Line item and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Lucas, got your light on?
Thank you. I will be voting against this as well. This is $71,000 to fix the seats at the Grand Opera House. Could the county attorney or the chair of appropriations please tell me how much has been spent on seats and new carpeting and renovations to a green room at the Grand Opera House already?
Well, I do not have that information, so I...
Right. We don't have it here. We don't have it available. It was available in the committee meeting.
Couple of million. $71,000, and this is for, we have already approved money for custom seats for the Grand Opera House. We have already approved money for custom carpet, you know, where you designed it and you build it, you know, you weave it or whatever you do with carpet, but custom. I have nothing against the Grand Opera House. I think it's a beautiful facility. It's a facility that we own, but we don't get any return from other than the cultural enrichment in our community, which is important. But $71,000 on some seats that were done wrong to begin with, that's why. We've already spent several hundred thousand on the new seats. And so this is $71,000 additional dollars, your SPOLOST money, that are being, that we'll approve tonight for extending the seats because they're not deep enough for folks to fit into. That's why you're spending 70, your folks are spending $71,000 additional dollars, and I'll be voting against it.
Thank you, Commissioner Lucas. Is there further discussion? All in favor of the ordinance, no further lights on. Assume you're ready to vote. All in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. Next is item E, which is an ordinance to appropriate some additional funds for Bowden Golf Course, and I'll read that, ask clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission approving and authorizing the appropriation of $100,000 from the 2017 SPOLOST bond proceeds and our 2018 SPOLOST revenues from 2023 Parks and Recreation Bowden Line item to 2018 Parks and Recreation Bowden Line item and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the committee amendment to that ordinance signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the ordinance as amended is approved. Next is item F, which is a resolution to authorize an amendment to the Consulting Services Agreement for the BLIT Task Force Initiative, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to approve and authorize the mayor to execute the Second Amendment to the Consulting Services Agreement for BLIT Task Force Initiative between Macon Bibb County and Georgia Behavioral Health Services, Inc., and other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Item G is a resolution for professional services agreement with Rum Creek Enterprises, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute an amended professional services agreement with Rum Creek Enterprises, LLC to include the assignment of additional project managers' duties for projects not identified as SPOLOST projects and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is item H, which is an ordinance for supplemental appropriation of $4,800 from fund balance for recording equipment at the probate court, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to approve a supplemental appropriation for the transfer of $4,800 from fund balance in the FY19 budget to the probate court's small equipment account for the purchase of digital court reporting equipment and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the ordinance with the committee amendment signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the ordinance as amended is approved. Next is item I, which is an ordinance to approve a supplemental transfer of $22,000 for some Superior Court recording equipment, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to approve a supplemental appropriation for the transfer of $22,000 from fund balance in the FY19 budget to the Superior Court's small equipment account for the purchase of digital court reporting equipment and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. Next is item J, which is an ordinance for supplemental appropriation for the GCAP program, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to approve a supplemental appropriation from the transfer of $10,000 from fund balance in the FY19 budget to sponsor GCAP students in attending the National League of Cities Annual Youth Conference and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. Item K is a resolution to approve an agreement with Wakefield Beasley for a needs assessment at the courthouse, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with Wakefield Beasley and Associates Architects, Inc., for a needs assessment for the Macon Bibb County courthouse in the amount not to exceed $91,650 payable from 2017 SPOLOST bond funds and our 2018 SPOLOST revenues, courthouse addition, courthouse line item, and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Lucas?
What does Bob Brown do? The person who's, I think we entered into a contract with him for something at the courthouse?
He was doing, he was doing some courthouse renovations in the existing courthouse pursuant to the, I think it was $5 million in the 2012 SPOLOST.
Was there? Okay. I was just wondering, because it sounded, when we approved that, that it was basically this same thing. So the other one was the main courthouse.
This is the needs assessment for the addition.
Okay. Well, I'd like to hear more about that when it's completed, to see what those needs are there, and that, will that be before we actually are asked to spend additional monies?
Oh, yes, ma'am. This is the first step in a long journey where we actually, before we get around to even beginning to design the courthouse addition, we try to contemplate what the needs will be. How many courtrooms, how many, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So this is a needs assessment before you get to designing the courthouse itself. So it's a first step in a long process. Any further questions? Any further discussion? No. Well, yes and no. They're out of Atlanta. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution... and the resolution is adopted. Next is item L, which is a resolution for landscaping and entryway improvements in front of the conference center over at the Coliseum, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with Ogles Construction, Inc., for landscaping and exterior renovations at the Macon Centreplex in the amount of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars payable from sponsored program accounts for the re-beadification project of Macon Centreplex Coliseum and Convention Center and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is an ordinance to approve a budget amendment and transfer of funds in the amount of eighteen hundred and ten dollars, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to approve a budget amendment to the FY nineteen budget for the transfer of funds in the amount of one thousand eight hundred and ten dollars from salary budget line items to cover part-time, overtime, and workers' compensation and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Watkins?
You said eight hundred and ten, but there was a committee amendment made for up to two thousand dollars based upon some other information.
I recall that now. Thank you for bringing it to our attention. Is there further discussion? All in favor of the ordinance as amended by the committee amendment signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the ordinance with the committee amendment is adopted. Item N is a resolution for the lease of the Grand Opera House, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between Macon Bibb County, Georgia, and the Corporation of Mercer University, a nonprofit organization for the lease of the Grand Opera House located at six fifty-one Mulberry Street and for other purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval as amended with an annual audit requirement. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Lucas?
Thank you. I'm glad that we added the audit that the commissioners, other commissioners agreed that we needed to add that audit function, because I would like to see with all of these contracts, since we say we're going to do a better job of monitoring monies that are coming in and going out of Macon Bibb's coffers, I'm anxious to see if this contract that we have, what is the amount that we get, Mr. County Attorney?
We get, pull it up. We get a dollar per year and five percent of the net.
We get a dollar per year, and what?
Five percent of the net revenue.
And the last couple of years, what's the net been?
I think zero or negative.
Okay. That's real good business. Anyway, that definitely needs a review along with some other contracts that we've entered into over the years that are no longer operating in the best interest of citizens. So I'm going to vote yes for this, because if somebody offers you a really good deal, then, yeah, and we've got a lot of people who have some really good deals, so I don't blame them for continuing with it anyway, if they don't have to invest anything. If we, we provide the upkeep and renovations to the building, all the expenses, and then the monies that are made with the shows at the Grand Opera House, that money goes for salaries of the employees, goes for everything that's involved with that operation, and then we get one dollar plus five percent of zero usually. So I don't think that's a good deal for Macon Bibb, and so I'm going to vote for it, and want to always thank Mercer for being a good partner in Macon Bibb, and many, many young people come here to get their education, and many stay here and enrich the community. So I'm voting for that reason. I will not vote another time for a contract like this, though, because it does not work in the best interests of taxpayers who have to foot the bill for all of this.
Commissioner Wynn, got your light on next.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I just wanted a little follow-up there, because I agree that Mercer's a good partner for us in this effort, and the Grand Opera House draws a lot of people from around the region. I also believe we discussed the fact that Mercer had put in over three million dollars of their own funds to do some, some work there, and so I appreciate that part of their money coming into this effort.
Thank you, Commissioner Wynn. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution with the committee amendment signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Item O is a resolution for leasing some space at the Department of Family and Children's Services to the Houston County WIC Program, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement of extension with the Houston County Board of Health WIC Program for the lease of office space located at four five six Oglethorpe Street in the amount of twenty-one thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars for one year and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Item P is a resolution for professional services to help design a bike trail at Lake Tobysofke, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute a professional services agreement with Flow Motion Trail Builders, LLC, in the amount of eighty thousand dollars for design and building services for a flow trail and bridge modification, improvement, and construction at Lake Tobysofke to be paid by two thousand and seventeen SPOS bond proceeds and our two thousand and eighteen SPOS revenues and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is item Q, which is a refund of ad valorem taxes that were improperly paid, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission to grant a request to refund ad valorem taxes paid on property located at six four two zero Mosley Dixon Road for the tax year two thousand and fourteen and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Item R is an ordinance for a levy filter blanket project, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon Bibb County Commission to approve a supplemental appropriation to the FY nineteen budget in the amount of eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars for the levy filter blanket project for the acceptance of funds payable pursuant to the two thousand and eleven bond repayment agreement with the Macon Water Authority and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the ordinance with the committee amendment signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the ordinance with the amendment is adopted. Next is a resolution for an Eagle Scout project, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission endorsing the Eagle Scout Service Project of Eagle Scout candidate Eric Woodford and authorizing the construction of a tree identification display at Amerson River Park and for other lawful purposes.
Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. The next item, item T, was tabled in the committee of the whole, and then will be taken up at next week's Operations and Finance Committee. Next item is item U. It's about, one, this was a late addition and added to the agenda, about nine-one-one charges, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission updating and authorizing nine-one-one charges on telephone services and wireless enhanced nine-one-one charges on other than prepaid wireless services, providing an effective date, repealing prior resolutions in conflict and other lawful purposes.
The committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Lucas, did you want the county attorney to indicate anything about the timing of this or anything?
It was necessary that the commission approved this tonight, because the state of Georgia has created the authority to oversee the collection of nine-one-one fees now, and they're going to start that collection on January one, and we had to do this one hundred and twenty days prior to that, and we did not receive notice from ACCG until Friday evening, Friday afternoon, that we need to make this requirement, and that we're doing this to make sure that these fees are amended to Macon Bibb County and not to the state of Georgia.
Thank you. Mr. Drake, is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted, and item V is a companion resolution about prepaid wireless services and the fees paid there, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon Bibb County Commission updating and authorizing nine-one-one charges on prepaid wireless services, providing an effective date, fulfilling, repealing prior resolutions in conflict and for other lawful purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Item W was taken up at the first of the meeting, so that moves us to item ten, which is a new business, and there are several items of new business which will be read and referred to committees and taken up at committee meetings next Tuesday. That'll be the twenty-eighth of August in the committee meeting room, beginning at nine o'clock in the morning. The first item of new business is an ordinance to approve a budget amendment to the FY nineteen budget for the transfer of funds in the amount of eight thousand dollars from the District Attorney's Small Equipment Improvement Line Item to cover temporary law clerk salary, Medicare, and workers' compensation. I'm going to refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item B is a resolution to authorize the mayor to execute the administrative settlement agreement and order on consent for remedial investigation feasibility study in the matter of Armstrong World Industries Superfund Site and authorize a settlement payment of up to sixty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. I'm going to refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item C is a resolution to authorize the mayor to execute the administrative settlement agreement and order on consent for remedial investigation feasibility study in the matter of the Macon Naval Ordnance Plant Superfund Site and authorize the settlement payment of seventeen thousand, I guess this would be up to seventeen thousand, six hundred and thirty-three dollars and forty-five cents. I'm going to refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item D is a resolution to authorize the mayor to sell the fire station property located at forty-sixty-five Forsyth Road and to execute any and all documents necessary to accomplish this transaction. I'm going to refer that to the committee of the whole. Next is item E, which is a resolution to authorize the mayor to sell that property located behind the Macon Bibb County's Vehicle Maintenance Facility at one eighty-one Lower Bay Street and to execute any and all documents necessary to accomplish this transaction. I'm going to refer that to the committee of the whole. Item F is a resolution to authorize the mayor to sell the former Macon Baptist Association property located at ten eighty-second Street and to execute any and all documents necessary to accomplish this transaction. I'm going to refer that to the committee of the whole. And item G is a resolution to authorize the mayor to execute the First Amendment to the Memorandum of Understanding with the Macon Bibb County Urban Development Authority related to the transfer of five oh six Hawthorne Street so as to extend the term through December the thirty-first of two thousand and nineteen. I'm going to refer that to the committee of the whole. Next is a resolution to reappoint Sylvia McGee to the Board of Bibb County Department of Family and Children's Services. I'm going to refer that to the Economic and Community Development Committee. Next is an item, is a resolution to appoint, or I'm sorry, is a resolution to submit the names of Dr. Fred Schnell, Mr. Albert Abrams, and myself, Robert Ricker, as a slate of nominees to succeed Fred Schnell, Dr. Fred Schnell, on the Macon Bibb County Hospital Authority Board. I'm going to refer that to the Economic and Community Development Committee. Next is a resolution to submit a slate of Jim Adams, Steve Krueger, and Eric Manson as the slate of nominees to succeed Jim Adams on the Macon Bibb County Hospital Authority Board, and I'm going to refer that to the Economic and Community Development Committee. Item K is a resolution to authorize the mayor to execute a construction contract with Warren Associates in the amount of four million, four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the Phase Two construction of South Macon Bibb Recreation Center to be paid by two thousand and seventeen SPOS bond proceeds and or two thousand and eighteen SPOS revenues. I'm going to refer that to the Operations and Finance Committee. Item L is a resolution to authorize the negotiations and or condemnation proceedings for blight at thirty-nine seventy Grand Avenue, Macon, Georgia. I'm going to refer that to the Facilities and Engineering Committee. Next is item M, an ordinance to amend the financial policies for Macon Bibb County Consolidated Government to provide the finance officer with the authority to authorize transfers up to ten thousand dollars between budget line items within the Personnel Service Component, wages, salary, benefits of departmental budgets. I'm going to refer that to the committee of the whole. That is all of the new business that has been prepared and sent down by the county attorney's office at this point, but other items may be coming down later in the week. So please check the agenda that is published on Friday afternoon to be sure that you know all of the resolutions and ordinances that are being referred to the committees for their further review, beginning next Tuesday, the twenty-eighth, at nine o'clock a.m. We have now reached the point where we have public comments on non-agenda items, and there were a couple of people, Mr. Attorney, that signed up for agenda items as well as non-agenda items, and I think we also had a couple of other people that have been very patient, waiting for us here. Marvella Ivory. Marvella, you recognized for comments on non-agenda items.
It takes a lot of time, commitment, and dedication to be effectively elected officials of Macon Bibb, leading these meetings, sitting through these meetings. It's challenging, especially today. Where will the funds for the parking meter be allocated to? What's the plan of action to keep Macon as a more business-friendly city, growing friendly city, population-wise? What's the update on the Drury Inn and Suites coming to Macon? Many businesses in the Presidential Parkway Shopping Center have moved or will be moving between now and fall two thousand and nineteen to, some have closed, and I know some will be relocating to the Bass Road, Starcadia Circle Shopping Center that was approved by Macon Bibb Planning and Zoning. What's the plan of action to keep the business flow moving in West Macon? If there's no plan, then West Macon will look like a partial ghost town. I brag on Macon all the time, regardless of the challenges we experience from year to year. How soon will the building for Starcadia Circle and Bass Road Shopping Center start taking place, laying down its foundation? I know there's some grand openings that are scheduled to take place in two thousand and nineteen. Our diversity, population of citizens are concerned about the business flow moving from West Macon to North Macon. With the budget not being stabilized properly to meet the necessities of Macon Bibb, then we need to have an online survey created for citizens to fill out and submit to a town hall committee to include the Macon, to include the mayor and commissioners and members of the community from each area, north, south, east, and west, and everybody being appropriately and equally represented in this town hall committee. I'm concerned about why new people moving to the middle Georgia area, they work in Macon, but they move to One Robbins Byron in Gray instead of Macon. I tried to get this family to move to Macon. They work in Macon, but they moved to One Robbins. I don't know why. Partially, they, I know partially, they said that it had to do with the schools. They prefer the schools in One Robbins than... They prefer the schools in One Robbins than Macon. We need a plan of action via town hall meetings. First, create the Macon Bibb Needs Assessment Survey. Give the citizens of Macon Bibb thirty days. Then, three, compile the surveys and prioritize tasks. And four, create an agenda for monthly town hall meetings in each area, north, south, east, and west. And this is not my first time talking about town hall meetings, so let's really strongly consider my suggestion. If you want different results, you've got to do something different. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. We appreciate you being here, appreciate your comments. Mr. Willie Fraser, are you still here with us? I know he was here earlier and spoke, so maybe he covered everything he wanted to speak. Mr. Stephen Taylor? Mr. Taylor wants to talk to us about public safety and Macon Water Authority water pollution, as I understand it. Mr. Taylor, thank you for your patience. Thank you for being here. You're recognized for five minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In light of the way you swing that gavel, I'm going to try to keep this brief, okay?
Thank you, sir.
Yes, I just wanted to bring out to the citizens of Macon, Georgia, and Bibb County, and Houston County, anybody that lives along the river. I personally live on the river, so I've got a personal investment in my home and my property. And I want to bring this out to the public the way that the Macon Water Authority hadn't been upfront with a lot of the people here. In light of all the spills they've had, four million gallons, and then again, seven, seventy-five hundred gallons, thirty-four thousand gallons. And then the next thing, you know, we're getting E. coli down in the well number eight at One Robbins Air Force Base just last week. I have recordings here of two wastewater operators stating how they cheat on the chlorine. They're not dosing the chlorine in the water like they should. And I have sent these to every board member in an email. I don't know who all got them, if y'all looked at them yet, or what. But I have brought some copies, hard copies, to give to you, Mr. Mayor, so you'll be in the know of what's going on there. And I'd appreciate a little feedback on this situation.
Have you addressed these concerns with the Macon Water Authority?
Yes, yes. We're current...I'm actually currently in litigation with them.
Okay, all right.
But they have shut me down every way I've turned, okay? The news media, Ms. Claudia, she's got a copy of it. She won't acknowledge it. She's not even here now. But anyway, I gave her a copy last week, and she can't seem to open it. She can't seem to acknowledge that she got it.
Thank you for your concern, and we appreciate it. Thank you for bringing this information to our attention. Anything else, sir?
I want to leave this copy, hard copy, with you, and also with Mr. Schlesinger. And I noticed Mr. Bivens is gone, so I'll leave what I've got here.
That would be fine, sir. And finally, Mr. Richardson, Donald Richardson, is here and wants to share some grassroots reflections with us again tonight. Mr. Richardson, good to see you, doing so well, sir. You're always welcome, and we look forward to hearing your grassroots reflection, sir.
All right. This is Georgia Bibb County to the Honorable Abner P. Power Judge of the Superior Courts of Seatt County, holding jurisdiction and chancery. The petition of John J. Gresham, trustee of Mrs. Ann E. Tinsley, wife of Howard Tinsley, formerly Ann E. Karn, shows that by a deed of trust from Ann Wiley, he holds the title to a certain Negro girl named Mary of yellow complexion, about seventeen years old. Your petition affirts shows that it has become desirable to sell the said Negro girl, and that it is the desire of Mrs. Tinsley and her husband, that she should be sold. And your petition appraises, Your Honor, to keep our order for the sale of said Negro, and that the proceeds be invested in other property to be held under the same trust as are set forth in the original deed, which is dated May the second, eighteen fifty-five, John Gresham. Now, this is in Chambers, May second, eighteen fifty-five. Upon hearing the foregoing petition, it is ordered that the said John Gresham have leave to sell said Negro girl, Mary, and that he do receive the proceeds of sale and other property to be held under the same limitations or are set forth in the original deed from Mrs. Ann Wiley, May the second, eighteen fifty-five. The reason why I'm reading this is not to be ugly or anything, but I'm still constantly doing research to kind of see where we have evolved in our culture. So, I just thought that this would be something, you know, to share as we continue to...you know, we have to know the past in order to go to progress in the future.
Excellent. Mr. Richardson, thank you very much.
And I'd like to make one comment. I heard President Coolidge's name mentioned. My great aunt in Atlanta was a companion to him, Mrs. Harold Coolidge. The Coolidges owned one of the largest paintings and varnish factory in the south, and one of the largest in the nation. And my aunt had a chance to meet President Coolidge back in the twenties when she and her two brothers chauffeured the Coolidges when he was president. And I think they were staying in what is called North Hampton, New Hampshire. So, when I heard that name, they gave me a sense of what the Coolidges were like. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. We appreciate your patience. Appreciate you being here with us tonight. I've got no lights for a point of personal privilege. We've reached the end of our agenda. Can I get a motion to adjourn? And without objection, we are adjourned.